Mike Hansel, Alderman Hansel, have worked extremely hard for them all the time. Working on the changing of the logo for the city. And it is absolutely beautiful. And we appreciate you, anyone else that was involved in doing this. It's always good to see positive reflection on the city and positive change. And I think you have it covered up outside and you'll indicate when we need to go. The new logo, but thank you, Mike, for your work. And I'll let you have this podium. Never did like them. I'll just sit with the table.
I've only got about 15 pages comments, so I'll try to make it brief. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to join us for our presentation today. As you know, most businesses and government entities have some sort of a logo or an emblem which represents them. And the city of Newport's no different. We've had one over the years. But I don't feel like that that particular logo represents us well. So in an earlier council meeting this year, I approached the council about making a change. And Mayor Ball recommended that we form a committee to look into that. That committee consisted of my fellow Alderman Jeff Fancher, who unfortunately is not here today, and also city planner Gary Carver. We didn't think there was any use in paying some public relations firm thousands and thousands of dollars to come here and do something that we were capable of doing ourselves. So we rolled up our sleeves and we got to work. Honestly, some of the initial images we come up with, we weren't impressed with ourselves. So we sought out some help from our local historians and other people in town and we slowly began to envision what we wanted to see. Just to give you some idea, we went through like 10 revisions before we actually come to one that we reached a consensus on. So we began our efforts by looking at what elements of the original logo were redeemable. And we felt that the mountain scenery or the mountains themselves, that was the key component that we needed to keep on this new emblem. We also agreed that the, it needed to be an original concept. We wanted to keep it in a round design. That way it wasn't a total redesign thereby being cost efficient, which is hopefully more appealing to our taxpayers. And we felt like it needed to have some sort of slogan that catches the attention of people. Me personally, I wanted to see the mountains have more of a 3D or a three dimensional look to it, and I think we've been able to achieve that. The slogan we agreed upon actually was an idea James Fancham gave to me, our city administrator, and it's Newport, the eastern gateway to Tennessee. Finally, we added two Tennessee tri-star emblems on each side and we put an established date of 1890. Now, some people might disagree with that because Newport was actually founded before that time. But we chose to look at it from the perspective of when the city actually started offering services. So 1890 was the date we found on that. Also, the slogan, that's not just a phrase that we put on Earth to take up space. It's something that the community actually needs to believe in and we need to buy into it. And I say buy into it in a metaphorical sense only. Because it's true, we are the eastern gateway to Tennessee. But it's also an idea that we need to impart to our visitors when they come in to see us. When I campaigned for this office, downtown revitalization was one of the key points that I talked about. And I think hopefully within the next couple of years, we're going to see some changes in downtown Newport. There are plans underway to actually bring those ideas into fruition. So in the meantime, we must be patient. You can ask Gary Carver, he knows me, I'd like to see things happen five minutes ago, but folks, that's not reality. It takes time and it takes effort. But more importantly, like I said, we have to buy into that slogan ourselves and convince our visitors that when they leave here, hey, those people in Newport, they really seem to pride themselves on being the gateway to east Tennessee or to a gateway to Tennessee. Once we do that, I think the sky's the limit. I've said in the past, I don't think this redesign of Newport's logo is going to have a huge or a sudden impact on our economic status here. But it does show that we take ourselves seriously. We're headed in a new direction and it will present a positive image for Newport. So without further delay, I would like to ask everybody to adjourn outside and Mayor Ball will unveil the logo. Then I would please invite you back in to partake in some refreshments. Again, thank you for coming.
Mayor?
I need a picture of you and Mike. If you'll move.
We do have only three council members here tonight. That is a quorum. Alderman Fancher could not be here. Alderman Bobby Knight had knee replacement surgery yesterday. The last time I texted with him, he was in the room and doing fire under the circumstances. So I'd like for everyone to remember Bobby in your prayers. Roll call, please.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Here.
Alderman Roger Gribble.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fancham.
Here.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the November the 15th, 2016 meeting. You've had a chance to look at those. Is there a motion to approve those as written?
So I'm like.
Second.
Second.
Motion, the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. I hear none. Thank you. Nothing under item four. Item five, correspondence from James Fancham, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The first item I have, last week I was approached by a resident of the golf course area who said they are having a problem with tractor trailer trucks being diverted or sent, not really diverted, but being sent directly down Heritage Boulevard and into the golf course area by their GPS systems. And it's trucks that are attempting to go to the distribution wirehouse on the Edwina Road for ConAgra. And the request was that we put up a sign, possibly two, one at the entrance to Heritage Boulevard at Cosby Road, dark red light, and possibly another one on the Morel Springs Road at the entrance to the golf course road. And that states, and he had a picture, I don't have that, but he had a picture of one that he had seen in Knoxville or somewhere that evidently had a similar problem. But the sign says, warning, your GPS might be wrong. No access to ConAgra facilities this route. And so he would like for the city to consider putting a sign up there. And I just wanted to run it by you all. I, you know, I think it might be a good idea to do that if they're having that kind of problem, and evidently they are, and they said it's getting worse. And so, but I wanted to get y'all's thoughts on it before we move forward with it. It's getting off out there at the Cosby Road where Burger King is right there when you get up, they're turning them down Heritage there between Burger King and Wiggles. Their GPS is telling them turn left now or turn right now and send them down through there and then sending them right on the Morel Springs Road and then left down into the golf course trying to get them over to the Edwina Road, which you can go that way. But son, it's a goat trail. And so the GPS does not discern between the type of the quality of the road.
Are you going to try to put it up there as they start in?
Yeah, right at the.
Or is it too late with 18?
Yeah, right at, it'd have to be right at the road where they could see it, where they're sitting at the interchange, they could see it.
Is that the only, just need that one sign?
Well, he asked for another one on the Morel Springs Road next to the golf course road near the interstate to warn them in case they don't see the first one. Maybe they'll see the second one and go on around and not cut down into the golf course.
Time to find a place to turn around.
Yeah. Well, if they wind on around, they'll come back out on the old Cosby Highway.
Yeah. I know there's some recent damage to the sign at Wiggles. Was there a possible connection to that?
I don't know. I don't know how that happened. I saw it, but I don't know how it happened.
That truck driver pulled in there and got too far to the right and he actually crouched the parve and went through their little island and the trailer hooked with the sign.
Does the sign there?
Was that the same one that did East Tennessee Coffee down there?
So if they're coming up the Cosby Highway for some reason? Oh, they're probably getting off interstate, I'm sure.
That would be my guess, yeah. I don't know, we just have to look at it and see what'd be the best way to position it for the most effect.
I think we need to do it. That's my opinion.
But it doesn't require a vote or anything. I just wanted to get y'all's input on it, you know, to see if y'all thought it was a good idea.
You and Mark and him go burn, look and see what we need and go from there.
Hey, James, are we going to be able to post some more strict signs on using the truck route? I noticed East Tennessee Coffee was hit again. And I've sat in there every morning and, I mean, trucks coming up on the sidewalk there. I mean, about everyone that comes down through there and tries to make a right.
It's prominently posted there, you know, and of course.
Can we enforce that truck route though?
Yeah.
Well, don't turn GPS in them that way. That's why they're.
Yeah, they're coming down there and going right, but.
Except if they go that way, there is.
We need to post something there that keeps them out of there.
We've got signs. Their signs are now.
Maybe we ought to tick a few of them and they'll quit it because, I mean, they continually tire that sign off. And then you can see truck tracks on that corner down there anytime you want to because they go across there. I mean, it's a daily thing. They don't always hit the building, but they always cut across and hit the sidewalk.
Well, I'm sure that the chief could have some folks come down there and monitor that.
Yeah. It's not the same truck drivers every time, oh, their district's minutes comes through or draw on you, they don't know what the next one's going through with.
Yeah, but we've got a pretty good truck route sign up. I mean, it's not like they can't see it, but there's a lot of reading to do there.
See, I asked them about that and they said, where I've been, that their GPS sends them that way, you know, and if they're supposed to stay on that way for their insurance to cover them, that's all the thing a truck driver knows. That's where we're getting in trouble, you know. But anyway, you work with that, let him work with it a little bit and see what we can do.
See if we can get something on that.
I think a lot of problems comes back on these companies that provide that service. They're not updating their maps. They're just.
You know, that's a pretty active corner of the morning, so they, you know, got to do something to keep them out of there.
One more thing that I would say to address that is there are people who are so GPS dependent that if you tell them to go to one block and turn right to get back to the right, they're absolutely lost. Is that GPS about to say turn right now or no entry? They don't comprehend.
Once they messed up, it's already too late when the 18 with it. It's not like you turn it around, I turn them into the town.
Well, there was a picture on the news last night of a woman that followed her GPS directions and drove off into the bay at some large city. I mean, I think you could see the water there, you know, but, you know, whatever.
Common sense.
Maybe they would remember it if you started hitting them in the wall. Like that's going to be the only thing, if they don't do it.
The dedicated runners, like the proudly shilling that comes from Bush to Greenville every day, they're making that, come down there and see they were able. It's that one truck driver that's never been to ConAgra before and comes to town and he says, do this. Or if he's coming from Greenville and going to Walmart, it says, do this, and that's all that.
Okay. Last Friday night, we had the small town Christmas celebration concert over at the First Baptist Church. We had a packed house. Best turnout we've had. It was televised. The entertainment was great and I think it was a great success. And I think that several of y'all were there and I think everybody would agree, it was definitely a success.
Absolutely.
I was very proud to Kelly Stokely, the job she did, our staff that worked on that. And so I think everybody enjoyed it, everybody, we had a lot of positive feedback about it. And so I appreciate all y'all's help with it. Yesterday, the finance director, Tina Matthews, and I had a long meeting with the auditors to get their preliminary audit report yesterday afternoon. I will inform you that they will be coming to the January meeting to give that same report to you all. But to brag on Tina and her staff, we had no findings. And that's the first time, and if anybody can come up with it, we had no findings. So that's, that's as good as it gets.
It is. Thank you, Tina's staff.
Finally, what I have, everybody knows about the wildfires over in Gatlinburg, Pigeon Forge, down into Pittman Center and Cobbly Knob. Devastation like we've never seen. And what I would like to do, I would like to call on the police chief and the fire chief to give a brief summary of our, the city of Newport's activities in assisting with and supporting those areas and their efforts to fight the fire and recovery.
I'll be fairly brief. I know Maurice's, law enforcement and fire look at some things a little bit differently. Actually Maurice and I talked probably 2:30 or 3 o'clock in the morning on Tuesday morning is when we realized we were both in Gatlinburg at the same time. As far as the fire side of it, the way, there's a mutual aid system set up through the state of Tennessee. It's been set up for quite a few years now. And right before 3 o'clock on Monday afternoon is when I was informed that they were going to probably need some mutual aid in Gatlinburg. I get this information, so does, and there's four officers, as far as the fire part of state mutual aid, there's four people in this county. Me, William Smallwood, County Fire Chief, Kevin Benton, EMA Director, and Chris Gregg, who is a deputy, but he, when he became part of those officers, he was chief of Cosby Fire Department. So when I got the initial request and found out what was going on, they had asked for us to see if we could find four engines and two brush trucks to send to Gatlinburg. At the same time, they requested trucks from Jefferson County. They don't necessarily request stuff specifically from Newport or from Jefferson City or from Dandridge. It's a county system is how it works. The people that we brought, we sent, we, the city of Newport, we had firefighters up there through Thursday night about 10 o'clock. We were in conjunction with the Cock County Fire Department. They had people there and we had people there in using Cock County's fire engine or brush truck. We are not at this time able to send a truck other than the ladder truck for a mutual aid call. The ladder truck was not requested. In fact, Mayor Ball called me and said, if they need the ladder or something, send it up there. That wasn't requested. Pumpers and brush trucks was what was requested. And so, long story short, we had people there through Thursday night. We were in a pumper with the Kent Cock County Tuesday. We were in a brush truck with the county Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We were also had four people in one of Kevin Benton's, those Hummers that the EMA has. They were in one of those Hummers all day and half the night Thursday. By the end of the, around Thursday or Friday, most of the fire, the bad fire, emergency fire was out. I mean, the fuel had burned up. You all have seen the pictures, the same pictures that I've seen. There was nothing much left to burn. They still needed fire trucks. They still needed fire personnel, but they also needed utility personnel, all this other. I'm sure Mr. Ray, wherever he's at, he probably had electrical people there. I know Tommy Bible sent people from the gas company to help with the gas. There was a lot of people there. This was not just a fire and law enforcement response. This was a everybody response. I heard of nurses that were in the shelter at the same time I was there from here in Newport. So there was a lot of response to help. I want to mention though, besides us in Cock County, the very first night, Parrishville sent people, Cosby sent people, Long Creek sent people. There's, there's people in this county, the people, the citizens here won't even realize we're there. And that's okay. They weren't there to get recognition. They were there to help our neighbor that would be here if it had been our problem. I guess what I'm trying to say is that same mutual aid system is set up for our fire and rescue and whatever. If I called the officers I know to call, we would have probably got the same type of response that Gatlinburg did. And we just appreciate you all putting us in a position, not just us, the city of Newport, but Cock County, in a position to be able to help our neighbor. Because they're important to us, just like everybody else is. And that's, I mean, that's, if you want to know any technical or more serious questions about how the mutual aid system works through the state, I'll be glad to explain it to you, but I don't think right here is the best time. Chief Schultz?
First off, I want to tell you the picture of Gatlinburg the night we arrived on Monday night when the fires were going. And I've said this in my church and I've said it to other people, in my lifetime, I've always had a picture of what I thought hell would look like. And when I arrived in Gatlinburg, that's what I saw. I saw millions of dollars burned and nothing could be done about it. I saw embers as big as softballs blowing in the air. And we communicated with the Gatlinburg Police Department Monday afternoon, Monday evening. The request that I sent was, what do you need and where? They responded, bring five and come to the fire hall, fire hall one at the Gatlinburg Police Department. By the time we could muster five and get there, they bugged out from that command post and moved to the community center. We immediately went into recovery or rescue mode. We were going street to street trying to find people. I will tell you, at about 15 to 2:00 in the morning, Joshua Schultz was riding with me. He, familiar, had worked in Gatlinburg, knew the streets. We went to Baskin's Creek Road, turned at a house that was on fire and had to roll the windows up on the car to keep the fire from blowing into the car. And we're able to take one moment to safety at the rescue shelter. Throughout the night, our officers continued to look for survivors, look for people maybe that had just escaped. And we manned a command or a traffic post at the top of the spur where you pull into Gatlinburg. And we directed traffic there the rest of the night. From that point forward, we had officers on rotation. We had two patrol cars there that we left in Gatlinburg, our two oldest prior patrol cars. And we let our guys transfer up, work a 12-hour shift, and come out. We did that through Friday. I will tell you that I was there every day but Tuesday. I can never express how much cooperation I saw. I can never be thankful enough for what I saw people trying to come and contribute and give. You saw officers there, two officers from Gatlinburg Police Department had lost their homes and continue to work. Firefighters lost their homes and continue to work. I will say this, I talked to a fireman on top of the ski mountain from Los Cassos, I believe is the name of it, which is just below Murphysboro, and he was there to help fight those fires. Saw patrolmen, police officers, deputies from Morgan County, Blount County, Knoxville Police Departments send a full crew in. Of course, they have more men on a relief crew than I have to work with, but they, they sent manpower as well. We communicated daily, we were in their command post for law enforcement daily. Just can't say enough about the cooperation and what went on. And I, like Randy, want to tell you all how much I appreciate the opportunity to be able to go. And I want to close with this, Gatlinburg is not just the city up the street. That's our friends, that's our neighbors, that is my relatives. I have a nephew, it's a Gatlinburg policeman, and a nephew that is a Gatlinburg fire inspector. My wife worked in Gatlinburg for 20 years. The wedding chapel she worked in for 10 years burned down. And I'm just, you know, there wasn't a question ever, are you going, what you're going to do. All we had to do was find out where to go to and who they needed us to help. And I'll be forever grateful for the opportunity to be there and try to do what we did. Even at times we were only just escorting people to their homes to see if it was still there, escorting business owners to their business, to take care of animals that live in their business. And I just, I'm so proud that we live in East Tennessee and we serve a government that will allow us to be ready and be able to go. And I'm just so thankful that more lives weren't lost in that tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I asked these gentlemen to give you this report because number one, I just, I wanted you to know what your people were out doing during that tragedy. That we were engaged, we were involved, and we were trying to do what we, what we could bring to the table, as much as we could bring to the table to try to assist our neighbors, to make it clear that we're, we're out there doing our part when it needs to be done. So chief, both chiefs, thank you. And y'all did a good job and I appreciate, I appreciate everything you did. The vice mayor has asked to make a few comments at this point, Mayor.
First, I'd like to recognize the leadership class this year. If y'all would, I appreciate if y'all stand up, okay? Got a good-looking bunch of kids. We really appreciate what y'all doing and trying to make the community better. Thank y'all for coming, okay? You people that need to sign their papers, we'd like you all to. Thanks, Rob. Also, I'd like Gary Carver and Dave Veridall to keep Cock County beautiful and appreciate what y'all are doing, see a lot of extra effort and that. And also I say Eric Knight back there. I don't know if somebody, I know they would want to recognize you somehow, did anybody have not jumped in front of somebody in?
Fixing too.
Okay, I knew that they were going to recognize y'all for cleaning up, making our town look better. So I'll let y'all take care of that for me. And I didn't know, Chief Maurice and Mr. Reagan there was, but I, these are a few people rolling up some of this tape. Thank you, we're going over duplicating if it won't take me but a minute. Better volunteer spirit. I'd like to thank Newport Utilities and Manager Glenn Ray and Jimmy Robson, Carmen Littney, and all the staff of Newport Utilities. Took them all to try to help in this disaster. Like that Cock County Gas Utilities with Tommy Bible, I didn't realize how many people had gas up there and they had to try to keep those things from blowing up. That's a big deal. I'd like to thank Maurice Schultz, the chief of police, for the assistance relieving severe county and Gatlinburg Police Departments. Newport Fire Department Randy Reagan and for their help. Mayor Ball for letting the city use displaced residents and putting supplies in. Cock County Mayor Crystal O'Nair and all the county fire departments, all of them assisting. EMA Kevin Benton, TDOT employees, State Representative Jeremy Fadie for letting expedite in the job coach in Newport to help displaced workers, you know, try to get them started on their benefits without having to wait eight or nine weeks before anybody even said anything to them. So that, that's always a big help. I'd like to thank Tim Dockry for the use of the community center and stuff, letting people drop off supplies there and helping every way you could. University of Tennessee football players, I saw several of them up there. I knew Josh Dobbs, didn't know some of the others, but sometimes there's more life than X's and O's. Should've seen the way those football players sort of tried to handle those kids or talk to those kids, encouraging them when they were down. You really think a lot different about the way things are. I'd like to thank all the people of Cock County and stuff for their prayers and stuff. They don't cost the volunteer state for nothing. Just want to appreciate y'all. This comes from all of Aldermen.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, James. I'm going to have to divert to item F on the new business for Tim Dockry. He's got a distance that he has to travel, so I'll let him get his.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I was just telling Virginia right there that I don't think I'm going to make it.
You're going to make it.
I've got to make it. It's the process for us to come to the council and request. And it's been since 1994 that we've tried to improve our fees and charges policy. And we've had families that have requested for the Newport Community Center to do some family memberships. In those family memberships, we were looking at $300 for that cost of a family membership. And it's a yearly pass that would start January 2nd through December 31st. That pass will include two adult and two children aged 17 and under. An individual pass right now sells for $150. So we're requesting from council, if we can improve our fees and charges at the request of the public, to add a family membership to our fees and charges policy of $300.
I talked to you and Virginia and I think you've got a good idea and I don't see a problem for it. It's a win, win situation. So I'd make a motion to improve it unless you've got any questions, anybody want to? Do we have a second?
So move.
An individual pass right now sells for $150. So, we're requesting from council, if we can improve our fees and charges at the request of the public, to add a family membership to our fees and charges policy of $300.
I talked to you and Virginia, and I think you've got a good idea, and I don't see a problem for it, it's a win-win situation, so I'd make a motion to approve it unless you've got any questions, anybody want to?
Do we have a second?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Take care of what you're doing up there.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no?
Hear none.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Tim, be careful.
Get your ball game.
Okay, there's no appointments to boards under Item 7, Item A, report from keep Cock County beautiful. Green Bay Packer fan.
Yeah, right.
Back some time ago, our former Director, Tim Burke, returned his resignation, I guess it was about six months ago, and then we started a search for a new person. And going through several different people, we decided on, best one we thought by far was a queer choice, was Ms. Mika Henderson, and she is a native of Bobby, Tennessee, and now resides in the skyscrapers and metropolis of Del Rio. So, she's a homebred girl, and, ladies, excuse me, be correct here, and we are very proud and happy to have her onboard. Her strength is in education, and that's what we're about. And so, I just want to formally introduce you to her, and at this time, I'd ask you if she could come up and make a special presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
She takes care of Pine Grove Church, too, if I know.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. And we were going to recognize Mr. Eric Knight for his beautification efforts. If you all don't know, he tore down some of the dilapidated houses behind Brock's and has made a green space in an area that really needed some beautification, so we're going to present him with the Polly Odinger Beautification Award, and I've got a certificate to give him tonight to recognize him for that, and then in the coming days, we're going to place a sign up there on the property to recognize him for all of his efforts, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to do this.
Eric, appreciate you and Kristy for what y'all have done up there, really looks good on that corner.
Best I ever seen. You could've brought subs tonight. Yeah, I'll probably go buy after the meeting in Bible. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, too, Kristy.
Report from Tanner Preservation Alliance?
We don't have one.
Okay, thanks, Carla. Old Business, Item A is consideration of the second reading of Ordinance 2016-10 Budget Amendment for the City of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the records. It's Ordinance Number 2016-10, Ordinance of Amending the Annual Operating Budget and Capital Program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, Fiscal Year 2016-2017.
Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no?
No.
Did you get? Item B is consideration of second reading of Ordinance 2016-11, the Budget Amendment for Newport Grammar School.
Mayor, that's Ordinance Number 2016-11, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, Fiscal Year 2016-2017 for Newport Grammar Schools.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that on the second reading?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none. New Business, Item A, consideration of first reading of Ordinance 2016-12, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title VII, Fire Protection and Fireworks Chapter III Fire Codes, adopting the 2012 International Fire Code and the 2012 NFPA 101 Life Safety Code to the Municipal Code. You guys are mouthful, weren't you? Do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of Resolution 2016-20, Administrative Services for Community Development Block Grant.
We would like to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, and it will be used for a, in conjunction with our stormwater study, to hopefully alleviate the flooding issues downtown. I don't know, it'll just be a phase of it, there's not enough money in that grant to completely do all the work we're going to need done, but it is one step in the process, and we need to use the administrative services of a group to help with the grant, because it's really immersive, and that's what this one is. Mr. Gribble had some questions about this.
Yeah, you know, I don't understand the, I haven't seen anything on this company. You said you've worked with them before, and what's the cost, what's the size of this block grant? Because basically, we're awarding this thing tonight, and we, the administration on, the company on 21620 that you selected will automatically receive the contract for the administration. I don't know what kind of money we're talking about.
It is a, it's a percentage of the grant awarded, and that cost comes out of the grant. So, if we don't get the grant, they'd receive nothing, so we're not on the hook if we don't receive the grant.
Yeah, but if we do, then they get the?
Yeah, the administrative services are awarded.
So, they're getting a non-competitive award at that particular?
Not necessarily. This was advertised to, for the city to take solicitations. They were the only administrative group to send back any solicitations to apply.
Well, it said, you know, the Community Development Partners LLC has the most appropriate experience, and I didn't know, that would indicate that there was someone else that didn't have the experience.
They're the only ones that sends back anything, yeah.
They're the only ones that bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's the same, well?
Okay, yeah.
Question on that?
So, if you, yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Motion to approve.
I see.
Motion, second, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none. The next one's you two, right?
Yes, sir.
Consideration of Resolution 2016-21, the Engineering Services for Community Development Block Grant.
Same situation, different side of the coin here. This is the actual engineering services. Mattern and Craig is the group that I am recommending, because they're the group that has completed the, or they're conducting the stormwater study, they already have knowledge of the situation and what we're trying to accomplish through the grant. And Mr. Gribble had a question about this. I did get a solicitation from a second company, W&amp;W Engineering, and it is my recommendation to go with Mattern and Craig, but if, depending on how you guys want to do it, then we can change the wording and the?
Was Matt, why, just because Mattern and Craig have worked with you previously, they, that's why you decided to award them?
They, well, they sent their solicitation book, they are more qualified for this type of project. They have done a lot of work in a city called St. Paul, Virginia, that's very much like Newport, on the same type of flood mitigation work that I think we're going to be looking at, and that's why I chose them.
And you didn't find that with W&amp;W?
No, they do have some experience in that, but nothing as close to what, with a river and a railroad, because we're going to have to go under the railroad track, and that's where I think their experience of the Mattern and Craig group was, that's why I felt they were the most qualified.
Mr. Carver, I feel like we need to trust you all, because you've been working on this quite a while, and I think you know what you're talking about. I feel like, for me, that, trust you on what you're saying, because we have to depend on y'all, you know what's?
Appreciate that, Coach, I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Gribble's. No, I, no, I understand that, yes, sir, yeah.
How you chose it, and that's what I was concerned about.
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah.
I didn't take it like that.
Oh, no, but I'm glad you did ask, and, yeah.
My goodness, we should be able to ask a question.
No, I wouldn't.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Item D is consideration of Police Department adding a new policy to the General Orders Personal Police Vehicle Program Policy.
As you all are aware, anytime we have an addition or deletion to our general orders, that has to be approved by council. This is a culmination of much reading and comparison of many different policies. It has the distance range, all the, when to use, not use the city car when it's assigned to one of the patrolmen or members of the department. And also, I would say that, again, we want to thank you all for the efforts to get these cars where we can sign them out, and I would refer to last week, or a couple of weeks ago on Monday night, instead of having to call people to come meet and jump together in a vehicle and go, we can, you know, leave from where we're at and immediately respond to this type of emergency, Gatlinburg or wherever. But this is just standard procedure to go before you all to get this approved. Deputy Chief Hudson and our training officer have worked very hard, and this is the one that put in severe holes and dandrages and two or three others together, this is what we came up with and we think is the best policy for the police department.
One of the things that's been discussed, don't you find it, you know, we've talked about it before, that you're saving money by letting policemen take their cars home? A lot of people think that don't save money, but it's been proven that it has in several ways, is that correct?
Wearing tire on the vehicle, one, and of course, Alderman Hansel knows from firsthand experience, they're more apt to take care of the vehicles when they take some ownership in it, not just everybody's car, and then you don't have the car being worn out, being driven 24/7, and when we're at full staff, every car gets driven 24/7, and I reiterate what I said a couple of meetings ago, we've got 2016 Ford patrol cars that are approaching 40,000 miles already that we're putting service this year, but it's definitely a benefit. As far as wearing tire on the vehicle, availability of officers, just by far, I think the benefits will far outweigh the cost. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Do we have a second?
He's got a question.
Okay.
We're looking at about, adding about 500 to 1,000 miles, based on the program, 1,000 miles per vehicle, by letting people take them home, is that about what you figured?
No, I don't think that'd be right. We've got an officer that lives in Asia-Green County, right as far as officers that live in Cock County, and we've got several officers that live right within Rockville District and the Police Department facility, and my son is going to say he's not going to bring another nonparking in our driveway, he's going to utilize the parking services of the Police Department to keep overflowing that driveway.
So, you don't know exactly, how many people have you got in this program, or do you know yet?
That will leave, every way it works, the Police Department will be, it'll be 27 or 28, depending on how full we are.
27 to 28 vehicles?
No, that's the, all the detectives, administrative, captain, deputy supervisor, and the deputy chief and myself already have a unit.
And y'all take those home, right?
Yes.
So, you're looking at 27 to 28 going on this program?
Yes.
And you think it'll be less than 500 to 1,000 miles?
How about?
Well, I mean, they take them home every day, and go up to 25 miles.
That's, but you've got to figure they only work 14 days a month.
Yeah.
And then they have annual leave, so it won't be 365 days a year for each vehicle, like it is when there's just five fleet cars that get driven to patrol.
You're monitoring all this real well, too, though, aren't you?
We have to keep a maintenance file, a mileage file.
It's not like turning them loose, whatever.
Right, if we get sued, we have to take each individual vehicle and show the maintenance records and everything on them.
Well, I think it's an incentive thing, too, for officers to keep them here.
Well, we lose an officer for taking on cars and a couple of other benefits that other people offer, but it's, when you consider, I pray every day that this never happens, but if you have a mass shooting in any plant or any school, my guys know that they're immediately going to respond, and if we had to respond, our 28 officers, we couldn't, because we wouldn't have anything to get there, and we'd be, we'd, we'd, I plan on calling to get out of it, but, I mean, it's an industry standard, it's city after city after city, talks about the improvement in morale, the improvement in the cars, the better taking care of them, and they'll all be responsible for keeping their own oil change and all this stuff.
Don't the frowned cities do this?
I know Dandridge does, several of them, I mean, by the way you go and look, they do. Knoxville Police, obviously, Dandridge Police Guard's here, Jefferson City Police Guard's here, I see Knoxville Police Cars and several counties around us, and I know we're not comparing ourselves financially to Knoxville, but it is definitely, I think it's one of the best benefits that you can have, as far as safety, community security, than the time one hasn't drive that far to go, and the policy makes sure that they immediately check in and put regular dogs, or if they have to respond to a call, it's not just driving around and go grocery shopping.
I know you'll monitor.
I'm sure you will.
Just to echo what Chief said, there are a lot of variables that plug into the mileage situation that you're talking about, sick days, vacation days, all that stuff would lessen that mileage.
Well, I said, looking at 40,000 miles on two vehicles, that was.
Those vehicles were.
Yeah, I know what they're just around, you know, it's four and a half square miles, we put 40,000 miles on.
Our standard is we expect into patrol somewhere in the area of 70 miles per day, and that's basically going to the four corners and see where the police.
Okay, we had a motion, do we have a second? Mike, you made the motion, didn't you?
Yes, I seconded it.
You seconded, okay.
No, it don't matter.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Maurice.
Item E, Gary, discussion of the strategic planning of Cock County.
This is just an update on the process. We have, I think we've gathered as much information as we can from all the different government entities and stakeholders in this thing. Lucas actually had to use for, you were doing a grant, right, earlier this month or late last month, that you had to use that, the old one, that's over 10 years old, so, important thing, and we're almost there, we should have something for you guys to review and vote on in January, and I just wanted to update you on that, and I don't have anything else, thank you.
Has the county finished their review here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Paratford was the last government entity to give us any input, and I think.
So, they've approved it, has read?
They've not, they've not, they've not voted on it, but we've not gotten any feedback to change anything, other than the statistics, because of course, those are outdated, but everybody seems to be comfortable with.
So, we're going to vote on it in January?
I hope so, unless there's some delay that I'm not foreseeing.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, that ends the new business under Item 10. We've got a bid to consider for a truck for the street department.
Yes, we're looking to purchase a Dodge truck, and this is in our budget for 2016-2017. We already have money in the budget for it, we budgeted for it, and we're looking at going with the statewide contract on this truck.
You shop around, you look locally, and you steal the best bid, is that correct?
This is the best bid we have. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve, to accept the bid for the truck for the street department?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposees, no? I hear none.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you for the job y'all done up there, Ben, you do a lot, I appreciate it.
Comments from citizens?
Yes. There was something on Facebook about a grant for county for water, and said for us to come to this meeting tonight if we had an area that we thought needed water. I was asking.
Canceric work.
Canceric.
Yeah.
I'm in the wrong spot, so I need to go over there?
Joker, we're glad to have you.
Yeah, I see Joker.
Come back any time.
No further comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
I'm not going to give you a chance to say no. I'm not going to give you a chance to say no.